Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam. Toohill.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Martha will not be here tonight. There is one change to the agenda if council is okay with this. Terry Baker wants just to report very quickly on this new guide that's at your station. It failed to get on the agenda. I think it'll be, you know, be quick if that's okay with you guys. Okay, so we're going to add Terry into the public forum and the rest, and then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the October 11th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of October 15th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $127,456.56. Approval of USD Step 1 debt in the amount of $25,950. That's for August and September. Approval of USDA wastewater treatment plant debt in the amount of $154,590. Again, that was August and September. Approval of the August finance report. Approval of the September finance report. Approval of an employee appreciation celebration dinner on December 17th, 2021. Acceptance of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee minutes. Acceptance of the Library Board minutes. Acceptance of the Beautification Commission minutes. Resolution approving employment in the Park and Recreation Department. Approval of total claims in the amount of $1,296,737.34. We had four claims larger than $75,000. One, the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool. That's $307,815. That's for our property and equipment. Three for Norris Asphalt. The first two had to do with the Fourth Street paving. $265,189.40 and $76,133.57. And the last one again was to Norris Asphalt. This was for 32nd Street. $468,924.46. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Toohill. Any discussion or questions? If not, please call a roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We will move on to public forum and appearances. Terry?
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I wanted to get our latest visitors guide in your hands. This literally arrived in our office at 2:00 today. You are the first individuals to receive copies of this guide. This is the guide we will be sending out to people who request information about Fairfield. You'll notice that we've changed up our design, made the magazine a little bit bigger, and tried to include something that would be interesting for people to read other than just a list of businesses and facilities that we have in the community. So I hope that you enjoy this, share it with friends and family, send it off to someone. And if you know someone who needs one, you can contact our office to send one out to them. Thank you so much.
Yeah, looks great, Terry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing it. Looks great. Okay, next is Chris Sorflaton and Virginia Lagunis. Are they here? No? Okay. Okay, well... If they come in later, we allow them?
Can.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Okay, well, just want to make sure. Okay, let's move on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The first action item is consideration of aerobic digester number one replacement bids. Melanie?
So this project is using the remaining grant funds that were part of the wastewater treatment plant project. And this is to replace one of the sludge storage tanks at the treatment plant. Bids were received on October 12th. Unfortunately, only one bid was received from Woodriff Construction of Tiffin. Per McClure's letter that's also attached to the agenda, prior to, immediately prior, the day of the bids, McClure learned that multiple bidders were having difficulty obtaining quotes from manufacturers based on the warranty terms that were part of the contract documents. Their, whether the manufacturers didn't catch that part until that time, or there was a misunderstanding, for whatever reason, there were, the bids were not competitive. There's no guarantee that rejecting the bids will result in lower bids, but we all agree that it will result in more competitive bids with more bidders presenting a bid. So staff and McClure would recommend rejecting these bids.
Move to reject the bids for the digester.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. The next resolution is consideration of fixing a date for a public hearing on development agreement. And that date has been scheduled for Monday, November 1st, 2021 at 12:00 PM with your approval.
This was the sole item on the Economic Development Committee's meeting earlier tonight. We're in closed session because it is a real estate transaction. And there's not much I can say except for we discussed this development agreement. And committee moved unanimously to recommend the council approve setting this public hearing for Monday at noon. So I'll make the motion to set the public hearing Monday, November 1st at 12:00 PM.
Second. Okay, moved by Hallie, second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Okay, next action item is consideration of the electric right-of-way easement agreement. This is for Access Energy. Aaron?
Yeah, essentially what they're doing is they're moving the power, the three-phase power over into the city. Well, the city right-of-way were in the, into the ditch to get to the new industrial park down off of 227th. There is going to be a portion that goes across our ground that's in, it's actually part of the sewer plant ground, but really shouldn't cause any problems. They're just wanting that easement so that they can put that through, so they can provide power to the industrial park.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Pam, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Next resolution, consideration of a tax abatement application for 402 West Broadway Avenue. This is from Dylan Frye. He's got three units in one building, putting on new siding and updating those apartments. Looks like a good project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, the first ordinance we have is the first reading, consideration of amendment to the regulation of peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants. Do you have any...
Well, this was discussed, the Economic Development Committee discussed this a few times. If you, can you click the ordinance link, Jason, just to see the stuff that's in bold, to see the changes we got? But yeah, it kind of came out of the food truck permit discussion of that the peddler license is really where a lot of the insurance and background check belongs because anybody selling anything like a city street needs a peddler license. So like a food truck person setting up a private property would still need one of these. So you could see there, the orangish color is what we're proposed to change. Also, there's, I think, three or four times that it's, it's making it clear that the Planning Department office is where this is handled in the city. So that was another part of this, was to make it easier for the staff in the planning department to handle these. If you scroll down a little bit, Jason, I think there's just a little bit more in there. So yeah, certified criminal history background check completed by Iowa Director, or Division of Public Safety Department Criminal Investigation. So, you know, this is standard language. We didn't make this up, but we just wanted it there in that, in that license to sell to the public within the city outside of a brick and mortar store. So this was recommended to the full council to approve by Economic Development Committee. And I'll make the motion to pass through the first reading.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Toohill. Any discussion? Hearing not, please call a roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. Let's go on to the next ordinance. This is the third and final reading for ordinance 1205 related to mobile food truck ordinance. Any comments from anybody in the, in the public to any council members?
I did share this on our city Facebook page last week, and Marla Brader had a couple follow-up questions concerning First Friday Art Walk. But it appears, based on the likes, you know, because that's, that's the true test of public opinion these days, is how many likes your Facebook posts get. I'd say there was predominantly a positive response. I think the way people perceived this was that the city is now allowing this, and they thought that was a good idea. So again, this just makes it streamlined process for city staff to handle requests for people to sell food from a food truck on public property. If they stay on private property, they don't need this.
Just the peddler's permit, then?
Yep, just the peddler license. This is only for those, those areas in yellow, so around Central Park and north of Petro Park would be the allowable areas. And then within city parks, they would go to the Park Department to get permission for that.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
Motion to approve final reading.
Okay, moved by Anderson, second by Toohill. Any other discussion? If not, please call a roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. So I'm going to go back to public appearances. I think we have our two people that want to address the council. Chris and Virginia, go ahead. You've got, you've got five minutes to address the council.
Did we go here?
Yes.
If you would please state your name and your address.
Chris Sorflaton, 602 North Court, Fairfield. So I'm a local climate scientist. I worked in town now for three years restoring beaver dams and wetland restoration. So in my research and development, I've kind of made several discoveries about how, like, allowing the grass to grow in people's lawns is actually the number one thing we can do to reverse climate change and lower the ocean. So I've done my own research and verified it with NASA data and all sorts of good stuff. So I've talked to you guys before about the lawn ordinance, and it's not a popular subject. So just kind of want to get a feel for what kind of process we need to go through to really look into it and really kind of decide if it's, what we can do about this. So first of all, I want to ask you guys, does Fairfield as a city recognize climate as a crisis? Or is this something that we care about as a city, or is this something we choose to ignore? All right, let me check. I guess I'll just keep going.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and finish? I mean, I, I think from a city's perspective, I think the council appreciates climate change and what's going on. We've done a lot of things to, over the years, to help it.
Yeah.
By a lot of solar that we've done, you know, our lighting, and the list is longer than that. But I, my impression is that there's not a lot of support to just let the grass grow.
Yeah. Okay, so here's, I'll just run through my notes here. Here's some basic facts. Ice melt, according to NASA data, so I reviewed the NASA data, and ice melt only accounts for 10% of the ocean level rise in the last 30 years. So in the last 30 years, the ocean has risen six inches, and only about a half an inch of that is due to the ice, the polar ice caps melting. So for whatever reason, it's not common knowledge in the mass media, but so that this is something that I've, I've discovered, and I'd like to bring it to the city's attention. And do we have city scientists who can look at this data? Aquifer drainage accounts for 20% to 80% of sea level rise. So the city of Fairfield, we installed a new well for the city of Fairfield about 20 years ago into the Jordan Aquifer. So we drilled, we went through it from like a 50-foot deep well to a 2,000-foot deep well. And, and now that well level is 450 foot deep. So, so we're, we're looking at a 400-foot drop in the water table over the last 20 years. And what's happening is we're basically, we're pumping water out of the aquifer, and it's going into the water cycle, and it's raising the ocean. Lawns in America account for more land than all national parks put together. Lawns in America have the power to offset our carbon footprint and lower our ocean footprint. Lawns in America have the power to reverse droughts and regulate the rain cycle. Tall grass lawns have deep roots that act as straws pumping water directly into the aquifer. Okay, here's, we are already in a crisis of biblical proportions. Indigenous natives from Micronesia are fleeing their flooded ancestral islands and moving right here to Fairfield, Iowa. So I met a guy last week by the name of Johnson Matanto from the Marshall Islands, from the small island of Saloise Sabor. So it's a little island that's non-volcanic, there's no volcano. The whole island used to only be six inches above sea level, and now it's at sea level. So it's like, the whole island is wet year-round. And it's a tiny island about the size of Fairfield. Only 1,000 people live there, but there's hundreds of islands that similar demographic, and they're just, they're leaving. They have to leave. They're, they're refugees, and they're moving right here to Fairfield.
Chris, your five minutes is up.
Okay.
Council, how, would you like to proceed?
I'll figure out what the question is.
He's asking how to make it. How do I officially ask the city to look into it?
Looking at what, allowing grass to grow longer?
Well, I think that's part of the discussion. So, Chris, you came last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I did a little online search and tried to find what other cities in Iowa do. And it's not exactly, they don't let people just grow to whatever's there. It gets, some of them get really involved where once a year or twice a year, you have to have it certified by somebody who can say that it's 80 to 85% native prairie, not weeds. So it's kind of a big deal, and that expense is on the homeowner. So it's not so much a thing that someone does in their yard as something like, someone has a big grassy field as part of their property, like a school or a hospital, and they want to do maybe an acre or two.
Yeah.
But then that's worth it, to go through that, to seed the gra, to seed it, to make it sure it's, it's what it's supposed to be and then have it checked. So it's tricky to allow people just to grow whatever in a lawn because how do you know it's not what our list of noxious weeds that say, you know, we don't want certain plants that...
Yeah.
So it's tricky. I mean, it's not impossible, but it might not be what you imagine it to be.
We, we will be the first city in America to enact such legislation. And what we're doing is we're actually removing legislation. We're letting, we're giving people the freedom to lower the ocean on their own property. We give people the freedom to reverse climate change on their own property and stop the crisis of biblical proportions. Okay, simple. Let, let it grow. Let, and not everyone, it's not going to be like crazy. It's not going to be anarchy. Only about 2% of people are going to let their lawns grow. It's going to be, you know, a few eccentric yards. That's it, you know? But it's actually going to save the city money, save the city hassle, scoff phones, job's going to get a whole lot easier, you know? We can do simple things like the right-of-way. Let's put a height on the right-of-way, but let people in the, in the non-right-of-way, they can grow it as tall as they want, you know? And when they wrote that law 100 years ago, pests were a big problem. But now we're down to 1% insects, or point, we're, we're going to like, we're having like an insect genocide, you know, there's like, there are no insects anymore. When you're driving down the highway on a road trip, remember how we used to like, have to clean the windshield every time you got gas? We don't have to do that anymore. I used to ride a motorcycle in the 90s. You know, I'd get hit in the face all the ti, now I don't get hit in the face anymore. The pests are gone. What we need to do now is let the lawns grow and start bringing back biodiversity is another huge part of it, you know? Give the birds some insects to eat. We're down to 1% birds, you know? I could go on, sorry. So why don't we start a panel? You know, why don't we start a discussion group? Get some scientists involved, like Fairfield, does Fairfield have any scientists, you know, kind of thing? Do, do we need a petition? How many signatures do we need? Can we get this on the ballot, you know? These are the...
That's the place that, that's your privilege to pursue all that and do all that and do that prep work and bring that to us.
Okay.
Yeah. Go for it.
Okay, so do we need to come back again, or should we come back with signatures, or...
Well, you have a lot of questions.
Yeah.
So you're going to have to start pursuing those. Build your panel, have your discussions.
We'll build our own panel.
And, and, because you're going to need some stats there and other things, because it isn't just about talking to us, it's talking to the whole city.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
So you're going to have to make your compelling arguments there. It's, again, it's not just for us, it's affecting everyone else too, and they want to hear what you have to say. So that's, that's where it comes back.
Yeah.
You know, we're here to assist you to pursue that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Yeah.
Yep.
I thought there was a provision in the Fairfield plan to allow some of the park regions to grow into natural prairies again, let the grass grow longer. Was that not mentioned in there?
I don't recall. I'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
Came up somewhere, I cannot recall where I saw it. I thought that that was a proposal at one point for Park and Rec to, A, reduce the amount of mowing they have to do.
We talked about it when we talked about green space.
Sorry, Tom?
When we talked about green space, the need for green space. And I know that was brought up, but I, I too would have to go back and look. I can't remember exactly what, but I do remember discussing that when we were discussing the need for more green space.
So Calvin might be a resource.
Probably.
For you as well.
There's some things in the last some wood, all the general plans, but different areas of that area that might be...
Yeah, not, not for prairie, though.
Not for prairie.
Yeah, we're trying.
Especially woodland.
Yeah, that's oak, oak hickory woodland, but he's talking about Calvin Todd, the Park and Rec Director, and Pam Kraft, Parks Director. I think that might be a better route to try to do some large areas.
Okay.
In the parks, I think you get more public buy-in than the idea of...
Okay.
I mean, you know, what you're pushing, getting a pushback about aesthetics, you know? Some people think a lawn's supposed to be short. So that's your, that's your hill to climb, but some area of the park where we let, and not, I shouldn't say let, because when you just let whatever grows, it's not, it's not prairie. You actually have to manage it. You have to...
To manage it.
You have to plant it, you have to burn it, you have to...
I mean, I know that we have places where, let's say, some lawns have not been taken care of, and we have a snake problem, and it's a problem for the neighbors.
Okay.
So...
Then it becomes a matter of interpretation. People think that they can do what they like, they don't read the ordinance, they don't take care of it like they should.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm all for planting more trees, that's my thing.
Yeah.
You know, I say if we plant a tree per household for the next 10 years, that'll go a long way.
Yeah.
For our contribution.
Yeah.
But I think Judy's right. Go out and create your own commission, do the study, do surveys around town, find out who wants this.
Okay.
And bring, bring the proposal to us. We don't, we don't have the experts that can come up with and write that type of a proposal, so if you want that, that's the proposal you need to come to us with.
So did I understand there's, there's no city in the United States that has this kind of policy?
Right, correct.
But there must be someone who has written some kind of a model proposal already.
I don't know. I, I did a search and Google replied, we're sorry, there is no responses to your search, so.
Well, it's a challenge, I, I would say, for people, you know? I mean, we, at this point, when your grass grows too long, the city goes down and cuts it.
Yeah.
Because it's unsightly.
Well...
And that's not good for our town.
Yeah.
Well, it's not good for economic development. We know that we have had executives try to bring people here to Fairfield, and some of those, and again, I don't know how many, but I know at, at least some have driven around town and rejected the offer to come to move here because we didn't look very good.
Interesting.
We didn't look very kept. So we want to work on that, and so how do you marry those two? It's a tough one.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But we do have a new, what, 40 to 50-acre plot of prairie ground north of Waterworks Park, which is a nice, beautiful park.
Natty.
Yeah, the Natty Land.
The Natty Land. Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Under the mayor's report, I'd like to set December's regular city council meeting for Monday, December 13th at 7:00 PM. The other option was to do it the 20th, and I felt like it was just maybe a little bit too close for Christmas, so if that's okay with you?
Normally, we only have one council meeting. That's, that, that date is actually the normal first date for the month anyway for us.
Yeah.
It would just be that we wouldn't have the second meeting in the, of December, that we normally don't have anyway.
Yeah. That's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I wanted to mention that we are looking for three new members who would like to serve on the Beautification Commission, so I'm just putting it out there to the public. If you have that desire, you can go on the city's website and do a search for Request to Serve, and you'll get a form that you can fill out and bring to City Hall. And then I also want to remind people to vote on, a week from tomorrow, because we do have some city elections taking place, we have school board, and there's also Indian Hills Community College question on there. So do your research and go vote. City Attorney Report, John, do you have anything?
I have a couple things.
I have a couple of things. I am intrigued by Mr. Sorflaton's talk and I hope he can bring something back to our committees. There is a National League of Cities Model Code and I think what probably, part of the problem that he'll run into is that most cities adopt their state municipal league codes off of that. And there's an assumption that's been made around the country over two or three generations that people keep their lawns mowed and that water runs off and it's a given rise to a whole field of storm sewer statutes and engineering. And we're part of that. We've just spent $40 million on a wastewater treatment system that's being overhauled. We're into stage three. Stage two, we just finished on a wastewater treatment plant. Plus we've built storm sewers to coincide with that. And as Mr. Sorflaton told you 20 years ago, we made an environmental choice to go to deep well rather than surface water for our potable water in town. So we've been trying to pay attention to the environmentals on big price items for this town. But there's certainly the rest of the story as far as wetlands and prairie and so forth, which I'm no environmental expert. But I think it's something that we get a chance, it'll be interesting to study. One thing I want to mention and as the mayor and the city administrator know well because I gave them writing cramp from 1:00 until 5:30 last Wednesday, we've finished stage two. My understanding is the funds were released end of the day on Friday. So we're at a point right now where pending a couple-page letter, that whole project is closed and that was the biggest part of our conveyor project. So we're moving into stage three, step three, so to speak. And that'll be over on the west side of town and down to the Grease Lightning pump site. So anyway, that's probably surrounding the town with improvement as far as that environmental area, which is treatment of our waste that is so important to everybody in the community. So other than that, I will just mention that there's an event happening here this Friday that involves lawyers and judges. It's called the Bench Bar Conference. I just want you to know about it. If the mayor has a chance or the administrator to drop by or any councilperson on Friday at the convention center to say hello to our visiting guests. Probably have 150 judges and lawyers over there. We do this every two years. This year's going to be a little different because our after-event, which our county bar always hosts, is going to be down at the Mad Hatter Parlor. And the Chief Justice of the Iowa Supreme Court is going to square off against the President of the State Bar Association for a challenge match. So I think that'll be fun and it'll be unique to our town.
That's pretty good. Okay. Committee and Board Reports.
I already gave the update. Like I said, we can't talk about the development agreement yet. I just say it's, it's going to be good for the city and the community.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, Administrator and Department Reports.
Just a note, normally on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we close the city offices at noon. That's the plan again this year. Also a reminder that our work session is on Saturday. We're going to start at nine. Great, it is a Saturday, right?
Yep.
Thought so. I, we just finalized our, with the audit and our financial reports for the last couple of months. I did not get a chance to, because I got the reports today. So I did not get a chance to put together something for you. So on the next council meeting, I will have a financial report for you, just for a heads up for that. Those are the two things I have at this point.
Yeah, I think on our, we'll get the agenda out.
Correct.
For Saturday. But I think one of the things we have on the agenda is related to the Rescue America Plan Funds, right? And.
Sure. Okay.
Well, okay, I was just going to remind people that Rebecca had sent out a link that showed where all that money could be spent. So if you have time, review that. So. Central Park Dining Project?
Just wanted to give a brief update on this project. Plus, you know, I don't have any more meetings where I get to talk to these wonderful people, so. So Jason, there you go, the budget. I just want to say, okay, we had four main items. Installation was just over 15,000. And that went to a local contractor who then got concrete from our local concrete company. Pavers were just under six, tables were just under 20 and then $480 to Whitney Monument for some granite, granite tiles for the donors. And then the funding sources for all that, Greater Jefferson County Foundation gave a grant in 2020 to pay for the tables. Everybody's Whole Foods and Fairfield High V each gave $2,500. Local option sales tax from the city was 7,500. Private donations, about 3,333. And then the foundation, Greater Jefferson County Foundation gave a grant this year for the pavers. What's not in there is the in-kind because that's very difficult to calculate. But our parks, or sorry, our street department did the site prep the week before. Did an excellent job clearing out, putting in crushed gravel. And then if you scroll down, you'll see volunteering. Melanie Carlson, the city engineer, got out there and I took a day off of work too. And you see me using the hammer a little bit. We called the hammer the, what do we call it?
Smell.
Oh no, we, some of the, some of, it was a suggester, yeah. Because some of the bricks needed suggesting, you know, like encouraging to get in there. So we used the hammer a little bit. And Parks Department were feeding us the brick. So we wanted to get it done in a day and we did. If you keep scrolling down, Jason, thank you. Yeah, pretty sore the next day, I was in the hot tub. So that's a before picture from two years ago that shows, you, one of the tables there under the park or under the pine tree. And it shows our lovely spirea and yew bushes. And then if you scroll down, you see an after picture. This was taken last week. The grass under the pine tree is already growing. So Parks Department decided to replant that. And now we have tables, the one on the left is ADA or wheelchair accessible. And the Parks Department brought over those trash cans. There's one at each station. And so it really looks nice and tidy. If you scroll down, there's just one more before and after. This is the northwest section and the after. So it turned out pretty well. Primarily paid for, not by the city, not by the city taxpayers, but everybody gets to enjoy it. There's another wheelchair accessible one there on the left. So all in all, a pretty, pretty successful project. I think most everyone's happy with it, so.
Have you had any feedback from citizens, people who used it, that sort of thing?
Yes, I get probably a comment almost every day from somebody who said they love them and they're happy they're there and thank you. And so, yeah, it's, it's been entirely positive. Even a naysayer who, I shall not say who, said while we were putting them in, you know, I didn't think this project was a good project, but now I think it is pretty nice looking. So there you have it.
They, they look great if you go up there and walk around. I mean, they, they, they look like they've been there forever. They, they fit in really well.
That was the plan, by using the same pavers and then the same company that made the benches. It just looks like it was always there as part of the streetscape.
And people, people started using them right away?
Yeah, October 1st, we got four of the eight installed and that was Oktoberfest. And they were in use the whole night. It was, it was really quite something to behold.
Great, thank you. The project report, Melanie.
I wanted to clarify something that John said about step two being done. This has been a discussion between some of us at times that what the attorneys or the engineers might consider the project being done is not necessarily what the homeowners would think because although we have closed the lawn for step two, there is still seeding and cleanup and, and fences to be repaired. This will, they're doing some seeding right now, but as we go into winter, we know that there'll be some touch-ups still in the spring. So even though John says it's done, there's still work to be done out in the field. So in addition to that, the Highway 1 water main replacement is finally moving forward. They're making good progress on that. On the 2021 street reconstruction or the, the street bond that we did, 23rd is on its final stage. That project was broken into several stages so that we can maintain access to the businesses. So it's on its final, its final stage. So we will be getting that one done before winter. Ninth and C Street at this time, we're not sure if they're going to proceed with that. A lot of it will depend on, on the progress over the next, next week. So we'll keep the public up to date if Ninth and C Street end up being closed yet this year. The post office alley is complete. So I'd like to give a big shout out to the city crews and also the public for bearing with us as we did it. It needed the improvements, but we do understand it was inconvenient for a while. The electrical vehicle charging station is nearing its deadline to get complete. We're working on some stuff with Alliant, but hopefully we'll see some progress in the next week. And then finally, the Chautauqua Park bathrooms and Waterworks shelters on the last page under future projects. The Park and Rec Foundation received funds from an individual specifically for restrooms. And so at the last Park and Rec Foundation meeting, I presented a floor plan and a rendering for what a shelter would look like out there. We're looking at doing a shelter with, with a kitchenette and a couple bathrooms. And so the Park and Rec Foundation approved and the donor's representative approved of that concept. We will need to have a property committee meeting at some time to also approve of it. But I will proceed with getting together plans and specifications so that we can bid that project this winter and see some, see some construction next year. The metal, metal buildings are booked through July of next year already. So we will just, we'll focus on getting Waterworks bid and, and on their schedules and then we'll work more diligently on Chautauqua Park after that, so. Those were the highlights I wanted to touch base. If there's any questions, that's all I have. Thank you.
Guess not. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, council.